Yes.
Yes, Harry.
Here we go. All right, very good.
That's it, Dan, Gary, right? We're gonna stand with that up, right? That's why I'm standing up.
I know, I know, last night, last night I was sitting in no seat until nine o'clock. Yeah, but then our agenda is not like this. They go from liquor license.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At 7:00 PM, please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call to order this meeting of the town council, and I will move briefly to the podium for the purposes that you will see shortly.
Exactly. How I feel about this meeting.
Our first item of business this evening is announcements, and the first of those announcements is to say that we would like to give to the community center a citation from the council. So I would ask that representatives of the community center join me here.
For tribe.
In this vicinity. Yeah, that's good. This is late developing news. If you were here a weekend ago, you will know that this celebration occurred at the community center. This is a citation on behalf of the citizens of Little Compton. The town council takes pleasure in commending the Little Compton Community Center on completion of 25 years of service to the residents of the town. The enthusiasm of its staff and the diversity of its offerings are testimony to its continuous focus on the welfare of the people of Little Compton. For the town council, I'd like to present that. You are welcome to address this group or not, as you so choose.
On behalf of the Little Compton Community Center Board and Staff, we thank the town council, past and present. Carol, your team downstairs are always lovely to us. Tony, and to all of our supporters, large and small, for the past 25 years, thank you for contributing to the great work that we do, and we're excited for the next 25 years. So, thank you.
One more announcement, and I'll use this forum to do that. You are requested, if you are in the audience and you wish to speak publicly, you're requested to come to this microphone and do so in order that we can capture it on the camera that is designed to do just that. We have had a number of folks that have watched from afar only to say we can't hear what they're saying, so we would ask that you come here. I would exhort myself and my fellow counselors to likewise speak clearly and distinctly into the microphones so that the people on the camera, or that are watching on the camera, can hear us as well. All right, I'd like to call to order then a public hearing to receive comment on the town's hazard mitigation plan. We're looking for public comment on the hazard mitigation plan, if any. The hazard mitigation team has put together a revision to the document that is our hazard mitigation plan, but this is a step in the process in which we open it to anyone on the floor who wishes to make such a comment. Seeing no one rise to make a comment, we will consider that there are no public comments, and I'll seek a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. A discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is approval of the minutes of September 8th.
Motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2022 Town Council meeting is written, unless anybody has any questions or comments on.
Second. Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce a person who probably needs little introduction to us, Senator Lou DePalma, who will open our discussion regarding the Department of Transportation and its discussion with us about their upcoming plans for state roads in town. Senator DePalma, thank you.
President, members of the council, it's good to be back here. This is a topic that we've been working on, I think collectively, for, I was gonna say years, but probably decades now. And we recently had a meeting with Director Alvedi recently, a year plus ago. All the time, someone runs together. And prior to that, there's been a lot of work and a lot of effort underway to try and understand and appreciate how do we address some of the most important roads in town, Meeting House Commons, Southtah Commons, et cetera. And if Roy Bonner was here, he would be asking us and saying, maybe he would say thank you, but I think he would probably say, it took you long enough. But we think of Roy and why we're here on that, but many times we always call and say, so Lou, what are we doing about Southtah Commons? We're getting there. He told me that the last time. Well, I think we're here. I want to thank DOT for coming down today. The objective of having DOT come talk to us today, I appreciate them doing that, is to provide to the council and those who will watch and get reported the status of some of the key projects in town. Mr. President, members of the council, and administrator, you remember some of the meetings we had, some of these projects had moved out to, I can't remember, 27, 2027, 2028. No more. They're happening now. Happening now means they're not gonna turn, you're not gonna see anybody out there tomorrow putting a cone out there or equipment out there. It's gonna go through the normal process you folks are familiar with, the 30% design, the 90% design, advertise, and construction. It's important that, having served where you have a long time ago, I still remember the local cities and towns' involvement with DOT to ensure your priorities, your concerns, your desires can meld very nicely, needs to meld very nicely with what DOT does. So for instance, if you were looking to do some work outside of Town Hall here or the community center, you can dovetail those two things together and say, oh, things have changed. How do we do that? So I think that's, I believe that's what we're gonna hear tonight. Before we do that, and I'll come back up at the end to address any open questions, one of these that's happened because of your request, the sidewalk or the traffic safety down at Adamsville. The signage, the crosswalk, that was done a while ago. Not because of not having weekly calls, and the person you're gonna come up with now, I've had weekly calls about other projects, not so much these, other parts of District 12. That sidewalk that's down there now, and I think, is it done, the sidewalk?
It was being worked on last weekend.
Okay.
It may have been completed by now.
Imminent, which is good from a safety perspective. It's something that the town and the council had requested. DOT got it. We went down there, Mr. President, and the administrator, we wanted to walk that. We saw the signs, we saw the sign, the striping in the road. That got done pretty quickly, but we said we really need to get the sidewalk here. Finally got done. Things just take some time, longer than we necessarily want, but the work gets done. DOT will follow through to get it done. With all that said, I think I spoke a minute more than I wanted to. Let me turn it over to DOT. They can talk about the projects, the folks that are here, and the projects that are coming up, so you can have an appreciation and ask them all the questions you want. And I'll come up at the very end just to recap some stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Hello.
President, members of the council, thank you for inviting us. Senator DePalma as well. And I am the person that Senator DePalma does talk to almost every single week to get an update on the status of the projects that he's concerned about. I have with me Pam Cotter. Pam is the administrator for the Division of Planning at DOT. I'm Lori Facette, and I'm the administrator for the Project Management Division at DOT. So the projects that I actually have a little handout, and I don't know how do you want me to get that to folks? Yeah, do you mind? Thank you. So currently in our program, and so when I say our program, I'm talking about the capital program, that projects that have been in our transportation improvement plan have cycled through the planning process and are now ready to move into either scoping or final design and then construction. So as you all know, and yeah, I'm sure you've heard, we did get an influx of IIJA money, so the feds saw it fit that we would get an additional influx of funding. That allowed us to be able to move a whole bunch of projects up. And of course, we heard from almost every single town and city to say, please, have our projects moved up. But, and Pam can describe or talk about a little bit of the asset management process that we go through in order to make sure that we are moving projects up at the right time and get them complete when they need to before they deteriorate beyond a time where we can have that finance and repair balance. Right now, the list that I just handed you are the three projects. You'll see the top three. So East Main Road from Peckham Road to Simmons Road, Meeting House Lane from South Commons to RI 77 West Main, West Main Road, and South Commons Road and Simmons Road, Brownell Road to East Main. Those three roadways are in one combined project. So when they are advertised, it will be one whole project. One contractor will come out and take care of all three roads. Right now, that is in scoping, and our scoping process should wrap up around October, November. Once that process is wrapped up, it will move into our final design. We will select a final design consultant, and they will complete that process with permitting our stormwater requirements and the complexity of how to implement this project. We're looking at probably a year's worth of final design. So we're looking maybe November, December of 2023, when it's actually advertised. The advertising process, for anybody who's not familiar, takes, we advertise for three weeks, and then it's 45 to 60 days to actually award, because the contractor has to come in, fill out all their paperwork, complete all the necessary requirements to meet our federal guidelines, and then we award. So we expect to be in construction April of 2024 for all three roads. Now, this would be the time, if anybody has a preference for which road we'd address first, because it's likely that the contractor would not ever be able to have three separate crews to start on all three roads. And to be honest, I am not familiar with this part of the state at all. So if, I don't know where these are in relation to each other, so I would never wanna have traffic impacted on three roads at all at the same time. We're very sensitive to making sure that we don't gridlock any towns once we get out there and start doing work. So if anybody has a preference, I'm all ears. I'd be happy to take that back and make sure that we, when we do issue the contract, that we do prioritize whichever road you have the most concern about. So in any case, that is, and I know that I had a brief conversation, I just met the administrator for the first time, and he talked about potentially partnering with us. So this would, this would, this project right now is really past the point where we could really add any new work. Now, with that being said, there is an opportunity with the cities and towns, as we've said in our meetings that we've had with each town, that we really wanna partner with towns that step up and say, we have funds, and we would like to collaboratively work with you at the same time, so we're only going into an area one time. We don't wanna come out and do a contract, and then we have to get a second contract to come out shortly thereafter and rip up or be in the same area. It just doesn't make sense. So if there was a way that the town said, hey, you know what, we have a little bit of money, we have this particular element of a project that we wanna include at this time when you come out to do these roads, we could look to say, okay, we'll have an agreement, a formal agreement with you, and if you wanna put up the money, we can include that as part of our contract and have the contractor come out and do all the work at the same time, and then turn that infrastructure over to you for maintenance and care. But that would also be something that your consultant, and I believe it's Beta, I think I heard through this grapevine, if Beta had the design ready and that we could easily incorporate that into our project at that same time. So we wanna figure out how to make that happen, and I think Tony and I will have a conversation very shortly after this meeting to figure out if we can make that happen. Then the last one on, in this particular area, is the Rhode Island 81 Crandall Road and East Road resurfacing. And right now, that's scheduled in our transportation improvement plan for 2028. I don't know the condition of that road, and I don't know if Pam can add to that, but that is where that's scheduled right now. So certainly each year, and if you wanna talk a little bit about the tip, each year we reevaluate all the projects that are in that tip. We look at it from an asset management process, but also we ride the roads, if you wanna talk about that a little bit, and then determine where things fall in relation to all of our state roads in the whole state. I'm gonna ask Pam to just talk a little bit about that, so you can get a sense about why that might be 2028, and then we'll be available for questions, if that's okay.
So hi, everyone. Pam Cotter. I run the planning group, which means that the big effort that we work on is our 10-year plan, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program. It's Ride Out's portion of that. So one of the things that we have been trying to explain to cities and towns as we're going through this is that that is a continuous 10-year plan. We update it every year. We have a call for projects that really emanates from the Division of Statewide Planning on the state level, so you'll get a formal call for projects in probably a couple of years. But we can also hear from you if there's projects that you have a priority about and wanna talk to us about. So as Lori said, we got new money this year, bipartisan infrastructure law or the IIJA. We got $1.5 billion over five years. We accelerated 100 projects this year with this year's allocation. And those first three projects Lori mentioned, those are accelerated, and that's another reason why we're going fast and we can't add a lot to it. But beyond that, well then, we're programming the rest of the tip. And although we've earmarked most of the funds that we know we're gonna get through formula, there's an opportunity for grants too. But when we're programming it, what we do is we prioritize based on the asset management process. Is it something that the life of the road is gonna get to the point where it's going to be too expensive to totally replace if we let it go for too long? And as you guys know, pavement has been somewhere where we've been a little short lately, because we've been having to concentrate on the deficient bridges that we have. So we're finally catching up with pavement, and hopefully we can get that moving. When we look at the assets that way, we also look at readiness. Are the projects ready to go, or are they gonna require a lot more effort, a lot more permitting, utility work, things like that? We also look on the financial side. Is the money available? Is there an opportunity for partnerships? And we also look for, are there other opportunities, such as can we go for a grant? Is there, the director loves to give the example of Amazon in Johnston. They were some company, excuse me, that had, you know, the opportunity coming in, building a warehouse, needed some roads, so we moved up a project to accommodate that. So all those factors are involved in how we program the tip, but that doesn't mean we can't talk, and that doesn't mean that we can't hear from you about your priorities and revisit it, like I said, every year.
Great.
I don't know what, go ahead. I don't know what other people's thoughts are, but I know Southtah Commons Road is pretty bad.
I'll second your motion on that, even though it wasn't a motion.
So Southtah Commons Road, I think, should be first. The other two, I don't drive them that often, so I think that maybe the.
I mean, they're all gonna, they're all gonna get done the same, same year. I agree, Southtah Commons has been on the head of the list, but my personal preference would be passes through the fire chief and the police chief for traffic flow issues and problems. They may want one road done first, then another, because of something that we're not aware of. Other than that, I'm all on for the Southtah Commons.
Okay. Let me just, I did fail to mention just briefly. So the coordination would always happen with, especially the DPW, but I will ask the team to make sure that they do coordinate with that group as well. The 30% design, probably December, January, February will be about the time that they probably be looking to, once we get the final consultant onboard, coordinate with the town for the first time. And so the 90%, as you asked for, if we're advertising in December of '23, would likely be around October, November of '23. So timing-wise, that would be when, probably the bulk of the coordination with the town. But it's important, especially if you're worried about any kind of traffic, that at that 30% stage would be when we would outreach that group.
Well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming these projects are in the nicer weather, because they can't do them when it gets too cold.
We'll start them in April, yeah. So we'll start them in April. It would, it would go through November. I don't know how, how the final design consultant will consider whether this would be a one year, whether they do all three of them in one year, or whether it would be two construction seasons or a season and a half. I really would have to wait until that final design consultant is onboard and see what the final scope is to know the length of time that the project would be in construction.
Because that, like, the opportune, best opportune, timing-wise, to do it would be in the winter, when you can't do it.
Exactly.
Because we, our population explodes in the summertime.
Okay.
And that's why I meant about the police and fire and traffic. Southtah Commons, we all agree, is probably the number one priority, but it's also one of the main thoroughfares to get to the beach.
So if we started that one in April, if that was something that we could get done by Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Or if that couldn't be done in that short period of time, then we can work to say, all right, then maybe it really needs to wait till after Labor Day, and we would get it done September, October, November. That would be the conversation and the coordination that we'd be looking to have with the town.
Exactly, thank you.
You made another allusion to the fact that, to the degree that we are able to contribute funds, we can, we have some ability to coordinate. We are, we are ready and able to do just that. We too have ARPA and IIJ funds that we have apportioned to various projects in town. Among them is the idea of putting a sidewalk that goes down this side of the Commons, the side that you walked in on. And so that's an example, not the only example, but examples of where we can, we can contribute, not just a desire, but also funds that are able to make that happen. This is, this is great news. This is, you were preceded years ago by the folks that came to tell us about the rumble strip removal. They got a standing ovation. I'm not sure you'll get the same result tonight, but it's not due to the lack of enthusiasm.
That's right.
It's so great to hear a state agency come and speak to us about, about these kind of things this way. And I'll tell you that our senator, I don't have to tell you, but our senator is our avenue for, for gaining contact, and we're very grateful both for the Department of Transportation and for Senator DePalma's efforts on our behalf.
Is there a certain amount of funding that's set aside for Little Compton?
It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't work that way. Well, a lot of times what happens to Little Compton, senators from upstate get in there, and they manipulate the funds. Providence and Cranace, who all would get out funding, and so we get hung up. So I'm just, you know, with this, no more truck tolls, is that gonna affect it?
It's not.
It's not.
So any, every project that is already in the tip is already funded. Our funding is already set for that. The truck tolling, and, and in addition to that, that statement, the truck tolls only represented about 7% of our funding. So it's, it's a concern, of course. I mean, $40 million is a lot of money, let's face it, right? And that's not something to sneeze at, but it's not gonna impact any of the projects that are in the tip.
Okay.
And if I can just comment a little bit about how we decide, like I said, we have this project prioritization process. It's data-driven. It's based on what we know we have to do and what is done in the right timeframe for the asset. So bridges were very important. They got, they got the priority. Now we're looking at roads. We're riding the roads, as Lori said. We're doing a lot of, we do an annual survey of all the roads, and we count down to a tenth of mile segments, and, and all that data gets crunched down, and that helps us determine what needs to be prioritized. We try not to do worse first, because that's not always the best investment, but it is data-driven now. It's not politically driven, and, and we hope to keep it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll ask the senator to close this out here.
I wanna thank Lori and Pam for coming down. I think, like, as Lori indicated, she will become a frequent flyer down to Little Compton from now on, I think. She knows, this, as you said, President, it couldn't come in, the council, couldn't come at a better time. The ability for the state and the town to work together on this is, you wouldn't wanna have done sidewalks or curbing after the fact, because there's no curbing there now, right? What, anybody, any of your constituents would say, did anybody have a conversation with anybody about this? And you can say, yes, we have. This is why we're doing it. Wow, things can work together well. I do wanna emphasize, the money is there. All these projects, the money is there. So when people talk about the IIJA, 1.5, 1.6 billion, the majority of that was coming every year anyway. What we got with the IIJA, the Infrastructure and Investment Jobs Act, of which, in fact, I was fortunate to be down at the signing at the White House for that. I got the invite, and I was there for the signing of it, added additional $500 million. $500 million to do the work that we, as a state, put aside for a while because of the issue of not addressing the 20% structurally deficient bridges in the state. So pavement on state roads in cities and towns took a backseat, and as we talked about, at one point in time, these projects were moved out, all were out to like '26 or '28 or later. That they're here now, it's critical, DOT, and I'll call him Tony, because that's how I call him, when I call him on the phone. We talked quite a bit. Tony's doing a phenomenal job with regards to what do we need, how are we doing this? I think the interaction between the town via Tony, yourself, obviously with DOT, who's gonna get the stuff done, and having sat in your seat, not as long as some of you have, and I applaud you for doing that, is that 30% design, what's in it? How does the town do what it wants? Get to 90%, the interaction with DPW, with the town officials to make certain it's all in sync. DOT doesn't show up one night, except for, or as a lawyer would say, but for, the rumble stripe. They don't show up one night. It's like, who put this in? And they all showed up and said, we made a mistake. We're taking it out. We don't wanna do something and have to take something out. So my other last suggestion would be, six months from now might be a good time to have a formal update from DOT on this. So sometime, whenever you'd like, I'll connect with Tony, if I make it back, in the January, in the February, March timeframe, to give you, get an update of where things are, what's happening, what are some of the issues? Because we all know, plans are just that. They change, issues will come up, problems will manifest themselves, and we'll work through them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Ben Gauthier, 87 West Main Road. To the point that Senator DePalma was just making, is there a temporal aspect to this that the administrator or the council should prepare to adjust the capital plan or anything else to make sure that we maximize the yield from these funds that, in fact, things may change to the, to the senator's point? That's my question.
Okay, yes, the question is, ought we to be in real time adjusting our capital plan to accommodate this? And that is, in fact, in progress. It was part of the submittal for the FY '23 budget, but in a limited fashion. We now have a much better handle on what those dollars are and how we propose to spend them, and those changes are being made in real time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, thank you very much. Our next item of business is to receive an update from the solicitor on the status of the town's interest in the Mayflower Wind Project.
Shall we make it sound speaking incorrectly?
Just pull the microphone closer.
Thank you. So I've been in contact with the developer's attorney almost on a daily basis, most recently yesterday at about quarter to two. Primarily, we talk about the State of Rhode Island Facilities Siting Board. They will make a decision on Monday, September 26th, at 2:00. It's very clear this open meeting is not a hearing. The board will not be accepting oral public comments. It would appear that we have filed a supplemental response on September 8th, and that's about the status of it. The project timeline indicates that they have set aside, this is Mayflower, from 2021 to 2024 for federal, state, and local permit review. So they seem to be on point with that. And so that's, that's the update. The council's, I'm sure, aware of the recent resolution by Portsmouth. We received a certified copy yesterday morning, I suppose at some future date. Should the council think that it's appropriate? I suppose at some future date, should the council think that it's appropriate to do that, they could do so. Doesn't have, in my opinion, legal standing to stop it, but it does express concerns that each and every town might have. I know that Tiverton is contemplating such a resolution, although I certainly can't speak for, for Tiverton and I really can't speak for this town council because it's something that came up. You'd want to know about it. So that's where we are. I, I do know from my own personal history, I've been working, uh, with it since, since May 12th, 2017, uh, on this cable. I'm aware of it for a variety of other scientific reasons and fishery reasons. So, uh, that's where we are. Well, let's, let's see what happens on, I'm sorry. Monday, September 26th, that is to be livestreamed, as you know. Someone from my office will be watching. Thank you.
So solicitor, you just said you speak with the attorney for the applicant. I don't know if you said daily or weekly. I have your bill here that we're approving today. Uh, 9/8, that you spoke with Chris Capizzi, who is the attorney for the applicant. You reviewed materials. You spoke with Bob Mushen, prepared for the meeting, two, almost two and a half hours for $517. So, I thank you for the update, but you've got two and, almost two and a half hours of, of meetings and materials. I think that we should have an executive session to discuss what you've been discussing with the applicant's attorney. I'm sure it's not, let's wait till next Monday and here's their timeline. We've got two and a half hours here, billed. So there's other things that you're speaking about with, with the, uh, the applicant's attorney that I think in an executive session, we need to discuss.
Primarily, I viewed most of the materials that are available to the public. And then I'd call them and ask them about various alternatives. I also spoke with a solicitor for Portsmouth and they have their own concerns. I have not spoken with a solicitor for Tiverton.
So I, I would like an executive session, uh, as soon as possible on this subject.
When would you propose that we would do that?
I'm happy to look at my calendar.
Let me ask that the clerk would circulate a request for availabilities and we'll ask where the council's, council members' availabilities are.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yep.
All right. Any other questions on that? The next item is a receipt. Sorry.
Could I make a few comments on that relative to the Mayflower project?
Certainly. Oh, sorry.
I had a meeting with CRMC yesterday. Could we, uh, just get one of these to each? Yeah, I think I kept the ones I needed. Wait a minute. Yeah, I got them. All right. Yeah, just, no, no, just one of each of these to the council. The first thing I'm, I'm asking to be distributed.
Don Gomez, and he's here. Uh, I anticipated he was here to speak to us about the next item.
Well, I am here. I'm here for that. That's deeper in my heart, but, uh, this one, this one is something I've been following for, you know, probably since 2008 or something. Remember back to the stakeholders meetings and things like that on the Ocean Samp app? And this, this first page is to just show you my position in CRMC at this point. Uh, as you'll note, we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh, subcommittees going. Uh, Policy and Planning Subcommittee, I'm vice chair. Ocean Samp Committee, which is a regulatory document that we put together that covers things like, uh, the wind turbines, uh, where they can be located and, uh, how State of Rhode Island is involved with that. I'm vice chair. On the shoreline change map, there's work going on because of climate change, uh, to how we protect our shorelines and what we do with the, with the rise. Little Compton on that is, uh, down a ways because we've got a lot of hard coastline, granite, uh, boulders and things like that. But places over to the west, a lot more sand and things. So they, uh, those are the first things.
Can I cut in one second?
Sure.
When you say, um, because I don't, I don't want to forget it. I think you and I have talked about it before. But, um, we're going to have a real problem with Secana Point Road, Pennsylvania Road. Pennsylvania Road, where the launching ramp is.
Right.
We have a good high tide and a strong, uh, wind. The water comes over that road. So I'd like to have coastal resources to be aware of that.
I looked at that problem. I was given that when Grover was still in place, to take a look at, uh, what we needed to concentrate down here, that exact position relative to our modeling with University of Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Shows that to be a problem. Uh, we were looking for, how do you get people away? If, if it does flood down there, if people get trapped. Uh, emergency services, are they going to be impacted and things like that? So it's, it's being looked at, Gary, and my position there is the, as yours, take care of Little Compton if we can, you know, so. And, and that's one of the reasons I really stick with this and do a lot of meetings is because, uh, I think it's beneficial to, to us.
Thank you, Don. I'm sorry for cutting you out.
Yeah, no, no problem. But I am aware of that and I've already done some work on some maps and things to identify that. The, uh, the two, the Rhode Island Ocean Samp and the Policy and Planning Committees, uh, give me a lot of latitude to get heavily involved with these, uh, things. And I note on here that the chairman and vice chairman of any committee is privileged to attend all subcommittees. The second thing that I gave you is wind turbines, Little Compton, Secana River, federal consistency. I want to talk about that for just a minute because Rhode Island is very unique and that we have an agreement with the federal government that anything offshore, withinshore and offshore, out to a considerable distance, has to come through the Coastal Resources Management Council for approval, um, if it impacts Rhode Island from a monetary standpoint, fishermen's, uh, uh, just, just anything. And I think I gave you a third document, which is a memo that, of cease and desist to Mayflower that says, uh, you, you're not going to do anything. You're not getting any permitting out to 2023. I think it was July, on the date on there.
June 20.
And, and the issue at hand is the Secana River, uh, and dredging and trying to get cables up it. Now, the federal consistency is a very, very powerful tool. Uh, we've used it often. Almost always, the federal government takes our advice and it usually ends up in some kind of a modification or denial, depending on how we approve it. What has happened recently is that Osted has now come in with one of, they have three, uh, offshore wind farms in process. And they want to bring one of those now up the Secana River along with Mayflower. So the problem is not only Mayflower, but you know, these, you know how it goes, right? So every day is something new. Uh, and I spoke to the director yesterday on this and, uh, he was pretty upset because they both have different approaches. One wants a very wide swath going up the river. The other wants a very narrow swath. I talked to Gary, I think just yesterday, Gary, but, uh, on the, and I, I looked at all of this for the wind turbines off Block Island, which I was heavily involved with, but the electromagnetic fields, for instance, is a problem. And they will bury the cables, they intend to bury the cables down to four feet. That, uh, has a, a reduction in the magnetic fields. There are magnetic fields. But if you get them down four feet, you, you get a, a very sharp comb going up. So they will claim that that takes care of that particular, uh, impact. In reality, what we've learned from the Block Island farm is that when you try to bury these, it's very difficult to maintain a four-foot depth, especially for that length. What has happened, which, uh, the design on, on the Block Island farm was a 25-year design. By the time they got done, it was reduced to 20 because of some faults done in the constructions and things. So it, it's not a perfect, uh, world out there. The, uh, what happened to them was that they had a lot of places that they couldn't do the trench. And so they ended up with big cement blocks covering the, the cables that were exposed on the surface on the way into Block Island, which from a fishing standpoint, uh, just one more thing to rip your nets up on. And, uh, these companies, I think Mayor Flip Mayflower was one of them, didn't want to set their, their turbines at the appropriate distance for things like draggers to get through in a storm. So we've already fought those issues and they had to go back and, and realign them the way we wanted. But the, uh, advent now of the Osted thing has to be brought into it. One wants a wide channel, one wants a narrow. It is a problem. I've seen a lot of other plans. One plan actually brought cables up through Little Compton on land. So, uh, that being the case, I don't think I have any more. If you have any questions, it's, it's really the federal consistency and you'll see the power of that and the fact that we shut them down for a year before they can do anything. So you could have a lot of meetings, but, uh, they're still shut down and we can extend that if we don't like the answer. So.
Don, something else we did discuss that, um, is a big concern of me, obviously, fishermen's views and the, you know. I know those electric magnetic currents are going to disturb whatever, uh, sea life is on the bottom next to these cables. But I've been asking, I asked Ms. Marissa Dusso, the lawyer that we hide, how do they plan on going under the water and gas pipe cables?
You, you did, you did mention that. I should have mentioned that. I'm sure that they will try to arrive at, that they'll tunnel under it. But, uh, you know, just bringing it, just bringing it into shore at, um, Block Island, we've had nothing but problems with that because the ocean surf brought it up. And it brought it up quite a ways out because if you tug on what's up on the shore, it pulls it out of the ground hundreds of yards out to sea. So there's some real practical problems and I wouldn't trust, you know, the ability to, to cable underneath that. And we don't know if there's ledge under there. What do we, you know, we really don't know. And it could certainly be a problem. Originally, one of the companies, I think it was probably Mayflower, wanted to go up through the Stone Bridge area. And, uh, you can't put two of those cables, you could only get two cables through there. They have to be separated by a certain distance. Um, so they don't interfere with each other. And, uh, you, you know the gut up there and it's impossible to, you know, to do that. So that's why they, they make landfall, look around and then come back. They also looked to bring the Rhode Island portions of these farms up through over Newport, around Jamestown and stuff. And every place they try one, they get, they get pushback, which is, is normal. So I, I see it going to be a very slow process, but we have a hammer. And, and it's really the federal consistency law and the ability to talk to the highest people that go on it.
Just to be clear, I understand, federal consistency implies that one state can use the decision made in another state on the basis of compliance with federal law to say that also applies here. Is that?
Absolutely. And that second document that I handed out to you, I'll just read what I, what I highlighted. Uh, you could, it, it's extensive, but, uh, section 307 of the Coastal Zone Management Act of 1972 called the federal consistency provision, "Give states a strong voice in federal agency decision-making", which they otherwise would not have, "for activities that may affect the state's coastal uses or resources." A little further down, the next paragraph, "Generally, federal consistency requires that federal actions within and outside the coastal zone, which have reasonably foreseeable effects on any coastal use, land or water, or natural resource of the coastal zone, be consistent with the enforceable policies of the state's federally approved coastal management plan", which is the Ocean, Ocean Samp, which I co-authored. So I'm very familiar with that. Very powerful tool. I've seen it used and it's been very effective. And I don't understand why places like Massachusetts aren't part of that. I mean, we could use the combination of the two states, you know.
Right.
So other than that, unless anybody has any more questions, I don't want to take any more of your time.
Don, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, are you saying they've delayed Mayflower?
What's that?
Have you, have they delayed Mayflower?
Yeah, they, I, I sent out the, one of those has a, a link that you can go to. The other one is the actual document that said you are delayed until, uh, I think, oh, July of, uh...
Has, has the Bureau of Ocean Energy and Management contacted the Siding Board?
Yeah, that, that is a document from, uh, uh, CRMC that basically calls the, uh, Mayflower contractors that they cannot, that we will not judge it. We're still looking at the river thing. And so it basically put a halt to them for one year. And at the end of that, if we don't have it resolved, there'll be another halt for one year. So what, what I'm saying is that Mayflower has stopped until we, CRMC, the State of Rhode Island, determines how that cable's going to go in and what are the problems. So it's officially, uh, they can't start that project until we give them a decision on, on those issues. We have a year to negotiate with them. If we don't like the answer, they still won't get a permit. So, uh, this is kind of typically the way things go, but I, you know, I, I, I'm familiar with this. I've been there for years and years. And, uh, that's one of the powerful tools that we have. And, uh, you know, with the, um, Block Island, they were worried. And, and Mayflower and some of these off of Martha's Vineyard, they're going to put down a 40-foot diameter pole, monopole, and they're going to drive it into the, to the, uh, sub, into the substrate or whatever you want, at the floor of the ocean to a point that that, uh, will stand, withstand hurricanes and things. But that concussion on, uh, you know, trying to pound a 40-foot diameter pipe into the ground will kill the squid population. That, that sonar signal will explode the squid and so the fish are liable to move. And they're putting it right into a prime, uh, salt ground, so.
Don, I just want to get your opinion. You know, we, I've been researching this and we've had meetings and executive sessions and we've hired lawyers and we've got a seat at the table. We have our own solicitor who's talking with the applicant's attorney often, from what I understand. What I keep hearing is, this is going to come up the Secana River, period. Nothing's going to stop it. Do you have that opinion?
No, no. I mean, the other, other we have stopped. Uh, and it was kind of interesting with Block Island, the plan was to go through Narragansett, on land, basically to get to a substation to accept the electricity from the turbines. And, uh, Narragansett Town Council noted unanimously that it will not go through Narragansett even as a cable hung on, you know, hung on wires up in, in the air or even buried. So, uh, the council killed that. The State of Rhode Island then found a beach that the State of Rhode Island owned and they brought it into that beach to the west of Narragansett and into a substation. But, so these things just continuously are in flux. The council has power relative to the Secana River, relative to Little Compton. It does have power relative to the river. You, you guys are kind of, it sounds like you're getting a consortium together, Portsmouth, Tiverton, whatever. Uh, and, and you should be able to control that. But the first, the first line of defense, I think, is coastal resources. The, uh, the other thing that I should note, and I, and I, I don't really want to prolong this, but the entry into Block Island was, was a real problem. The people that own the wind turbines, their ownership ends at the beach. National Grid picked up the ownership coming back to the mainland. And by the nature of Block Island, you've got three miles that you own around it, state waters off the other beach, but in the middle was federal water, you know? So you ended up with federal and state problems. But that, uh, it, it, that came a show off. That got washed up. The cable was there. It's a swimming beach. It was a big problem. And, uh, the Osted fixed their part of the problem, but it was a year of negotiating on who's going to do what and who's paying for what. So that whole thing where it came ashore, like they want to do up in the river, to get into, I guess, Portsmouth and go up, uh, could be, have a very similar problem. So these are all learning things, but it's not, it's not... So these are all learning things, but it's not, it's not like, you know, take a drill and run into the bank. So we have to be really, really careful. Not, I'm not against renewable energy, I mean.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I support renewable energy, I support these when, you know, I think what we're doing is questioning their science on, you know, that's what you're talking about. And, you know, being on one of five councilmen in Little Compton, it's our responsibility as stewards for the Secana River and the fishermen and the recreation here. I mean, why are we on the council if we're not, you know, watching what's going on with our community? But I am for wind power and I would like to see a peer review of the science.
But it needs to be done properly, that's all, so that it doesn't, you don't throw the baby out with the.
It needs to be done on the beach and not out at sea. I'm sorry, I've got a mechanic's point of view with all of this and I just think it's, I understand the physics, why they want to put it out in the ocean. I understand the consistency of the wind and all that stuff, but we do not have the technology to make something out at sea that will last 25 years. I guarantee you the blades are going to be replaced, there's going to be armatures replaced, there's going to be painting and damage to all these towers.
We've already run into that, Paul, with the five we've got.
It's ludicrous and they're asked to do this, they're ignoring all the basic science. Anyway, I'm sorry, I said my piece.
And I said more than mine, I know you guys are busy, so.
Thank you. That has added.
If you need anything one-on-one, Bob, which I try to keep you appraised with this, but.
Thanks. All right, the next item of business then, yes, sir?
Hi, Ben Gauthier again, 87 West Main Road. So I'd like to just, no, I came here with basically an opinion that's the integration of Consular McHugh and what Mr. Gomez just said. I think if we cannot formulate a technical argument for why we have issues with this cable coming up the river and what the long-term plan may be once a cableway is established and exclusion zones are established for additional keep-out, where you can't trawl, where you can't put in a race marker, where you can't anchor, I think if we cannot establish the technical argument for why we're opposed to this specifically, then spending money on gentlemanly legally conversations is a waste of public money, right? If you look at what Mayflower has done with Falmouth, and Falmouth is one of the other landing stations and all of it's posted, they will ask very proper questions, why are you seeking an exemption to this particular statute? And the answer would normally be amongst professionals, we think that this constraint is binding and we'd like some relief here, but that's not the answer. The answer is, the law provides people who are subject to this statute with the ability to seek relief from that statute, we're seeking relief. There's no conversation on the specifics of what they intend to do, okay? So if we don't have specifics on what we object to, these people have at least 15 years, the offshore power majors have at least 15 years of experience dealing with, and I don't mean to be pejorative, but basically sophomoric questions from locals who are opposed to something in their backyard. So I think we need to invest first in what is the argument, like Mr. Gomez was just talking about, before we talk about conversations amongst lawyers that are going to be, you know, gentlemen speaking before gentlemen have their time because the technical arguments that they have are so much more advanced than what we have. And that's my concern. I think we're going to see spending a lot of public money as unprepared people.
Thank you. Next item then is the town administrator regarding plans to wirelessly connect town hall alarms to the public safety complex. He does not intend to use any cabling that goes through any river to get there. This is all done wirelessly. We're attempting to take advantage of the fact that we have the ability to connect this building and all of its alarms to dispatch, which is a 24/7 manned entity that we control. So it makes complete sense that that's the way we're going to put this building back together when we do that. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. You certainly summarized it really well. So at this point in time, as the president pointed out, is the current alarm systems that we have here need to be updated greatly. There's a major need to do that. In addition to that, we also need to connect this building to the fire station through a radio box. So those are the components. So upgrade the alarm system and also install a radio box that will connect this building to the public safety. With that being said, we will not need the middle person as we have been paying quarterly. We've been paying a fee to do that for someone to monitor the alarms. And as you pointed out, we have someone who can do that, our dispatchers 24/7. So we can avoid that fee and directly go right to the public safety. In the meantime, what I would ask you, even though I would like to have some action taken on this, I'm going to ask you to continue this item because with the town plan renovations, the Fire Marshal has jumped in and rightfully so, and he has brought up a couple of things to my attention that need to be addressed before we can continue with this, pursue this.
Great. Any questions on how we're proceeding and why? You have inputs to make regarding this, we can see the administrator.
Motion to continue, son? Motion for a continuance.
The motion's made and seconded to continue this matter to a future meeting. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is new business to receive letters of interest for a position on the Little Compton Pre-Public Library Board of Trustees. I have in my package a single application. That application is from Jeffrey Kenyon, who is the incumbent. I'd seek a motion to reappoint Jeffrey Kenyon.
Motion to reappoint, second.
Any motions made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is a letter from a set of residents requesting to be designated as a steering committee to begin planning Little Compton's 350th anniversary celebration to be held in 2025. That set of citizens is in row 1, 2, 3, 4, I believe the five as well, but they have a spokesman who is going to talk to us about this. I would also say, as Mr. Goulart is approaching the podium, he's given me two documents I had never seen before, that's because I didn't come to town early enough, and these documents are from 1975, the last time we did this, 50 years ago.
What we're asking tonight is permission to plan for the 350th celebration. Gary, you remember, the tricentennial was a wonderful time in town and we're starting to get together with the committee, we're starting to plan and we'd like to have the council's permission to.
I'd seek a motion to approve the formation of this steering committee and bid them God's speed in getting this discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There's still stories from the last one.
Yes. It was.
Good luck and thank you for coming forward to do this.
Yeah, this is, this is the kind of thing that just absolutely makes this town different from 38 others. We are very grateful, thank you.
Makes Little Compton, Little Compton.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
The next item of business is from a group of residents whose names are included in the application and the spokespersons for that are the husband and wife, James and Carol Block, who are with us to describe their emphasis to us regarding solar panels on municipal buildings.
Well, thank you very much and I know you guys are busy and I really don't want to take a lot of time, but we've been at the end of the Little Quicksand Pond Road for the last 20 years and have been fooling around with solar on our own panel properties. And the most recent attempt that we had this year has demonstrated, at least to me, that rooftop solar is a much better financial proposition than it's ever been, especially with the new, with the new laws that have been passed. And then riding through town, there are two or three places, at least two roofs in town that would be ideal for solar panels, that really wouldn't disturb much of the character of the town, the back of the fire station and police station. And some of the roofs on the school are really ideal for solar panels and the scope of what we're talking about here is pretty substantial. It's two or 300 panels, which would have an enormous amount of energy generation. And best I can tell, return on investment is substantial. It's probably eight or nine percent, it's probably three or four percent more than you could get, you know, investing your money. And I do think right now there's a bit of a sense of urgency around this because people are going to pay attention to this, probably even more importantly, it does look like electricity and power rates are going to go up substantially in the next year or two. And if the town can get ahead of this, I don't think it will cost, there are a whole variety of ways to do this that won't cost the town money. And first of all, there are a lot of people, I think, in town who are very much in favor of this. And I'd like two things. One is to bring it to the council's attention now is, I think, the time to move forward. But second of all, there are people in town that would be more than willing to spend their time to just solicit some proposals from three or four different contractors and then bring them to the town council so that you can see what's on the table without any obligation to anybody involved, just, there's a lot of people in town, I think, that are pretty interested in this. So those are my, those are the only two reasons that I'm here.
Great. This is, I think, exactly right for this moment in time. We have, as you're, I think, aware, you have done solar at your home before the Solarize Initiative in 2015, 16. We had 38 houses that came aboard at that point in that timeframe. And then since then, we've worked with Power Options, which is the entity that we got along with our electrical provider when the League of Cities and Towns negotiated for a common electrical provider for all of the cities and towns. And that provider is Constellation Energy. But in addition to that, they brought with them this group called Power Options, who does the kind of brokering that you're describing. Specifically, what we've used them for is to broker the fact that we can buy someone else's solar energy at their site and then as a result of them selling it to us at a discount, realize a significant savings. We just got the figure from Power Options that our $107,000 annual power bill can be reduced by $35,000 simply by using someone else's solar energy. So to add to that, our own capability, I think, would be an important next step. So I believe you've brought this to us in a very timely moment and I'd like to move forward with whatever we can do to gather this impetus from people that are excited about it, to try to get, make that happen.
James, would you be willing to spearhead a group to try to do this? Do you have the time to do that?
Not only do I have the time, but there's at least three or four other people in town. There's some pretty ser, I happen to know that there's somebody on the town council who knows a fair amount about solar. I actually heard about it from three different people, I won't go into the names.
Yeah, you have to be careful with those rumors.
But yeah, there are some people who are very interested. I would be more than happy within two weeks to give you guys an outline of when we will have data for you to look at.
So.
Two or three different proposals. I mean, I'm not saying we'll have the data in two weeks, but we should have a timeline within two weeks because I know you guys have to put a budget together if you want to invest in this and that's going to happen early next year.
That's going to happen late this year, yeah.
Late this year, I mean, so we're not talking about, you know, Mayflower here. We're talking about a shorter timeline than that and we'd be more than happy to put that together.
So I'm going to make a motion that we allow James to get together a group and discuss whatever needs to be done, to come back with some kind of information for the council to absorb, look over, and then possibly go forward with solar for the town buildings.
I'll second it, but I'll also say have your group reach out to me and I can give them some of the logistical stuff I went through to put the, I've got a 250 kilowatt system on single access tractors, it's 715 panels.
So if I'm that person in the group, would that be okay?
That is absolutely fine, but I'd also give a walking tour, somebody can come back and you can see, sometimes it's a lot easier to put your hands on things and actually look at them to understand what you're up against.
There's nothing like dealing with a scientist.
So just to be clear, the data that you're going to bring us, or proposals you're going to bring us from solar companies?
Yes.
So, you know, if we were to go forward with this, these companies would have to go out to bid, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, absolutely.
So we wouldn't want to, if someone's going to give us an estimate, they might not be able to bid on it.
Well, absolutely. That's right.
So we just want to be careful on.
Well, we can't, I'm not in a position to say to anybody, you know, you got the inside tracked on a bid here, right? We're talking about people who are willing to look at it, no strings attached.
In the simplest way, that's a very good point, Counselor. The fact is that we will ask sometimes for a rough order of magnitude figure from someone in order to get a sense of what the cost is without them laying out in detail what their proposal might be so that they have the ability to bid on it.
It sounds like there's detail here, data.
There's a lot of data.
Not just a figure.
No, we're, yeah, there's a lot of data.
I'm just saying that the manner in which it's proposed to be solved does not have to be revealed in order to give a sense of this would cost this kind of funds and this would cost this to be able to pull it off.
The best outcome would be for two or three different approaches to be brought to the council.
The only thing I'd say is pass any inspection through the town administrator because these companies are going to want to come and physically look at the buildings and the infrastructure.
That's right. They're going to want to look at the roofs.
And we need to have them show up on public property, but be aware that they're coming. We can't just have them show up randomly.
Right, and get thrown out because they're.
Well, I don't think they get thrown out, but they might get questioned, you know.
Yes, I agree completely and that's probably the single most important reason I can.
And we can probably supply them with an escort, like from the maintenance department or something, an escort to look at different things.
James, do you know Bruce Gavin? Do you know Bruce Gavin? He's right, he's in the audience there, he's pretty, pretty good with electoral situations. He's.
He is, not any longer in the audience. Oh, yes.
He is, and he's still awake.
He's trying to hide, he doesn't want to get involved with this because he knows I'll try to get him on board with this. So maybe, James, you could speak with him and he's got quite a bit of electrical knowledge.
Well, I don't, actually.
Fair enough.
So I need all the help I can get.
Enthusiasm goes a lot farther sometimes than the knowledge of something, so we greatly appreciate it. So we have a motion on the table, will we?
Yes.
We do, and it's been made and seconded. Is there, could you state it again for me?
Mr. Block, to gather a group of residents together to gather data and return to the council.
That's the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The only thing I would.
I think there was discussion before the vote.
Just, my name is Larry Anderson. I signed Dr. Lock's petition and I support the effort. I just wonder, just as sort of nitpicking, whether, and Paul mentioned it, whether your motion should formally involve reporting through or to the town administrator in terms of this initiative? I just, there's a certain uncertainty about the coordination of this in terms of getting proposals or visits and so forth. I just wonder whether that should be formalized in the motion.
It certainly could if that's the desire of the.
I don't think that that's necessary. I mean, you should.
You want to reword it, Gary? You want to reword your motion?
Just to add that contact should be made through the town administrator.
Yeah, I think that's my motion.
I'll amend my motion to, I'll amend my second rather. I'll amend my second rather.
And I don't want to deter these people that are coming forward to do something nice for the town, to jump through any hoops. I don't think that's jumping through a hoop. But I don't want to put any roadblocks up when a resident comes forward, wants to help the town do something.
So the motion is amended to require that this group deal through the administrator in order to bring forward recommendations to the council. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Anderson. All right. Next item of business is a copy of the CRMC Rights-Away Subcommittee Report and Recommendation. Now, Don Gomez is not also hiding, though.
Yeah, he's here.
All right. Thank you. Goodness gracious. This is the reason that I thought Mr. Gomez was coming tonight, and I'm grateful that you did both, so...
I've got all trades, right?
Yes, sir.
And now I'm living with an octogenarian and I'm trying to get used to it, so... I did that on my grandchildren. They didn't know what an octogenarian was, but I... She gets insulted if I call her a senior citizen, so...
I really wish we'd move on from this particular thing.
Anyway, the rights away, I spent too much time before. I know you guys really want to get out of here, and Gary's going to keep time on me. He's going to be the guy with the signs, "One minute left," et cetera, et cetera. But I passed on to you a document that was to be approved by the last council meeting last Tuesday. I think it was Portsmouth had five rights aways ready to go for council approval. And my point is, we've been doing this continuously for three or four years, and I have mentioned it to various people at different times, but we just seem to keep losing rights aways here. And part of my problem is I go back too far when I had free run of the town. And people actually invited us to hunt on their property during the winter because they wanted to know if they had been broken into or a door had come ajar or something, so it was much more friendly. Over the years, many, many, many rights aways in Little Compton got lost. You know of a few of them. I think we're down to three rights aways. And I'm reminded, many, many decades ago, when the council audited that the Taylor's Lane right-of-way down to the beach had boulders stuck there. And we held a meeting with the then-council president and a couple of members of the council and asked them to please remove that. And she did. So maybe you can guess who she is, but that would have been another right-of-way that we lost. And it's still there and people can use it. So I get a little passionate on this subject because I've lost so many. But Coastal Resources, maybe if you had time, you could just... Has an extensive rights-of-way Subcommittee. They have a lot of money. I think they're looking at about 450 miles of coastline in the state of Rhode Island. We are the ocean state. And they are trying to get one right-of-way for every mile of coastline that we have. I think they're up over 300 now. This is another five coming in. Coastal Resources pays for the legal work. They take it right up to looking at the deeds, the history, whatever they can put together through our own legal team and the rights-of-way committee. And it's there for us to try to grab onto. We have certain areas like Elmy Creek that has come up several times. I don't know exactly what you do, you know, down to Secana Point, Lloyd's Beach and stuff. That's very unique. And in general, at the end of these, but there are places where Ag Trust, for instance, has bought a piece of land. Town of Compton, Little Compton paid for that. And it's our property. And chain-linked fences, chain fences go up, so you no longer can access that Ag Trust land from the Little Compton viewpoint. So some of those things need to change. They're not legal and they can easily be fought. So I just would like to bring this to you, think about it, and let's see if we can put something together. I can get the director to come down here and talk to us publicly, privately, any way you want. They do have a briefing and stuff on it. But I think we're missing opportunities and we're losing... The longer we wait on some of these, the more we've lost the rights to the beach for our citizens. Sometimes it involves state or federal funds. Therefore, it's not just limited to Little Compton. The... What am I thinking of? Grange Avenue down there, Hester Simmons?
Town Landing.
Town Landing was deeded for the people of Little Compton. Well, I'm not sure exactly what we used for money, but we had lots of people coming for surfboards and things. So I think you've got a very good project down there now. I think it's clean. People seem to keep it clean. They run their dogs to get to the beach. But it's not Little Compton. It's, you know, it's more of a general thing. But I have not seen a lot of trouble down there, so that's a good example of something we were able to do. It did take a long time, probably 10 years, I think. Bob...
And that's an example of one that is not designated... I looked at the most current data, I think, and there, to your point, there are three in town. Town Way, Taylor's Lane, and the boat ramp at Secana Point. Those three places are currently the only three that are designated in town. And Town Landing is a perfect example of one that probably rates being one.
Was a good thing, I think.
Yeah, because that's how...
I've heard some disagreement with that opinion, but I think it's a good thing.
Well, there are... Yeah. There's a... Obviously, it has to be used in a manner that we would prefer that it be used, which is...
We can...
Gently.
We can talk a little bit more offline and structure something. Show me the card that says you're done, cut. I think...
Don, I have a question for you. How does Little Compton access this service from the CRMC? And secondly, do you think there's right-of-ways in Little Compton that have yet to be discovered?
Well, I think Little Compton... I get my hearing...
Do you think there's right-of-ways that have yet to be discovered in Little Compton?
Yet to be discovered was his term.
Rights-of-ways? I think the old rights-of-ways, when I grew up, there were, I don't know, maybe it was 100, right? They were all over the place. A lot of them were for seaweed and for different things. I used to fish where the golf club goes and the road splits the back line from the front line. It was right-of-way directly to the shore there.
I'm going to take that as a yes, that you do. And you said 100.
But obviously, we're not going to open that one up.
Sure. But... How does Little Compton... How does Little Compton access this service from the CRMC? How do we start?
I'll start. If you give me an okay to, you know, line up the right people, maybe come talk to you on what we can do, I can take care of it. It's not a big deal.
The Beach Commission does it on a regular basis. They go to CRMC for periodic and more permanent authority to do... Maintain the beach.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow Donald to... I'll give Donald the right to... CMC, CRMC member, he's done a wonderful job for the town of Little Compton. Being on the CRMC, I think he's pretty knowledgeable on rights-of-way. I remember when I was a kid growing up, there was a lot more access to the beaches and, as he said, we could go straight to bass fishing than there are now. And people come into town and they buy a piece of property and they encroach on the road and encroach on it. No, soon there's no more roads. So would you be willing to invest a little bit of time to talk to this Rights-of-Way Subcommittee and see if they know of any more rights-of-way or they could research it?
This... As you know, I'm appointed by you to serve, you know, as the Coastal Resources Council rep to Little Compton, and that's a very unique position. No other town does that. So just my background in the town led me to try to, you know, we worked that out. And for me, that's a good thing. So I feel that I don't even need the motion, just... But I'm fine with that. I feel like I'm part of the organization.
I think there should be a motion, too.
If it is a motion, I'll second it.
Well, I think the motion should include going through the town administrator also so that we are, you know, we're available to what you're doing. Not just, you know, a side conversation with someone on this committee.
I understand. No problem. We'll work that out, I think. Yes.
So the motion then is... Your motion is to ask... Go ahead.
Allow Don Gomez to talk to the Rights-of-Way Subcommittee and to investigate any rights-of-way that we have in Little Compton and to communicate with the town administrator on any such conversation that should be privy to the town council of the town. Can I second it?
That's the motion that's made and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Again, my name's Larry Anderson. I support the intent of Mr. Gomez's proposal. I guess my question is, and maybe, Don, you can help with this. You provided the recent example of the Portsmouth Initiative. Can you explain sort of the chicken and egg thing? Whose burden is it to identify possible rights-of-way? I mean, will the town have to engage its own resources and efforts to come up with possible rights-of-way that CRMC would then investigate? Or can you just expand a little bit more on how the process might work?
The way I see it work is basically it's collaborative effort. They would come down and go through our documents. We would have available some of the areas we think might be of interest. They would then research that through the records to determine if that's, you know, all the legal issues. Was it a right-of-way? Has it been taken away? Was it legal, not legal? And it takes a period of time. But you have to put something in front of them that says, you know, "Here's a case that might be. Here's a case that might be." And then they will do as a lawyer would do, come in and go through the books and records. And if they need to talk to people, they would talk to people. And they would periodically report out. The process would probably take a couple of years, a year, more than a year. But I would say, because once they've done the work, then, as you saw in that document that I gave you, it has to come in front of the full council. Do we approve it? Is there anybody... Is a public hearing? Is there anybody that doesn't want any of that? So that's done at the state level. So there's very little, except, you know, Carroll might be... Was the book that says this or something, you know, the fountain of knowledge over there. But I see it as minimal on the town's behalf. The town normally has to sign up for, you know, trash barrels or something, keep it clean, that type of thing. Other than that, I don't see the problem. I think I can get it going and, you know, if there's somebody I can talk to, we'll bring them to the council or just, you know, come in. I just... I'm very much in favor of it. And I've seen, you know, 250, 300 new rights-of-ways opened up, including one in Providence on Allen's Avenue, so that the people that live down there can actually go to the water and fish in walking distance. And, you know, everybody came in, the mayor came in, everybody celebrated this. But it was Coastal Resources that really put it together. And it was based on people had moved roads and all of that kind of thing. And that was done by Coastal Resources. Providence didn't, other than come in and say, "Boy, we did a good job." You got to have a photo op, right?
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
The next item of business is a copy of a resolution adopted by the Warren Town Council encouraging the state of Rhode Island to regulate broadband service as a utility and partner with municipalities to develop a comprehensive plan.
I think we should make our own resolution supporting this. I mean, right now, as far as I know, in Little Compton, there's only one internet provider. And they seem to have COP launched when they go up on prices every year. So if we can get the government involved with this, and that's very seldom. I say I want the government involved with anything, but I think at this time it might help. So that would be my motion, that the town council writes a similar petition, send it to the state.
Is there a second?
I got an issue with this, Gary.
Okay.
Anything the government gets involved, it tends to cost more. It just... They deregulated the phone company for competition because they said he was getting... I don't know if it's politically correct, but Ma Bell was getting too big. So they decided to break it up into a bunch of different companies. And everybody said, "Great, the phone's going to be competitive." The phone bill went up. They deregulated the power companies. The power companies in arrogant answer didn't have a monopoly anymore. They deregulated that. The electric bills all skyrocketed.
Well, that's okay. I mean, that was my view on it.
No, and I appreciate your view, and it sounds like a good idea. I just... That's why I'm not seconding it. That's why I'm staying out of it.
I'll second your motion.
The motion is made and seconded, then, that Little Compton have a corresponding or similar resolution created. Is there any discussion on that? Administrator, any thoughts on that?
Thank you. I'm thinking as you're discussing this.
I would say, you know, at least from the last meeting that we had, the seven communities, this was actually a point of discussion. As I'm rereading the resolution, I'm looking at is that we're trying to avoid having 39 different...
Solutions?
Please.
Solutions?
Solutions and come together and say, let's save the funds from all of the folks that may be high in, and let's put it towards the cause, which is to get broadband out to the communities and to the residents.
It's my sense that this is the direction that the group we met with is going. Is that your sense?
That is correct.
The group we met with was mostly South County and South...
The East Bay area.
East Bay.
Correct.
South part of the East Bay. In the Newport County Chamber of Commerce spaces is where I think we met.
They're the ones that promoting this. But not just that. When we had the state, actually, the Commerce RI rep that was there, and they heard aloud and clear that with the seven municipalities in the area, why should everyone hire a consultant? So you're hiring seven, eight, nine consultants when, in fact, the state could put those funds towards, "Let's reach out to the communities, see what their needs are, and let's do this as a group, as a band."
Well, I was just supporting this resolution that deals with high-speed broadband in the government. So if you guys... I mean, I don't see why that motion will pass. It's just a motion to write a similar resolution. And if you and the town solicitor are already working on that, I really commend you for doing that because internet service in this town in certain areas, you got it sometimes, sometimes you don't.
Gary, we're the worst in the state. We're the worst in the state with connectivity here. What these folks are talking about, and I think I have the acronym right, it's BEAD. You can go online and you can look at it. It's $49 billion from the federal government. And what they're doing now, and they're in the process of finding out what communities, what rural communities are having problems with. So we're going to have to prove at some point soon what our connectivity issues are. So whether we hire a consultant or people go on and do speed tests at the correct website. So this is all going to be happening soon. That's why you see these resolutions coming before us. I'm going to be at the next meeting. I've asked Tony to be at the next meeting. I think it's in a month or two.
Yes, it is.
And this is going to be coming down the pike soon. And like I said, Little Compton is the worst in the state with connectivity.
I have no method of assessing the veracity of your comment, Solicitor or Counselor. I have no idea whether we're the worst or not. We certainly suffer from the fact that we don't have good connectivity. I think that's a common problem, and I think that a common solution is probably best. Are you ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Four in favor, one opposed. Thank you. The next item of business is a copy of... Sorry. Is a request by the Young Family Farm for a single-event entertainment license for annual apple picking and music festival.
I'm happy to make that motion.
I'm accused. Motion is made and seconded with a recusal by the solicitor. Any discussion?
Just so the general public knows, this is for the Young Family Farm to hold their Just so the general public knows, this is for the Young Family Farm to hold their apple picking festival on Sunday, October ninth.
Great, thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the abatement list submitted by the tax assessor.
I went down and spoke with the tax assessor a few days ago on this abatement list and what's happened. Was this first gentleman, came with an assessment, and he went in and talked to Denise, and what it comes down to, the debated tax amount is three thousand—well, it's three thousand seven ninety-seven fifty, and the new tax bill is going to be five thousand two hundred thirty-seven five, and that's by an agreement of the landowner and the tax assessor. So it's actually—we're going to abate it, and once we do, we're going to end up with another fifteen hundred dollars more than what the debated tax amount is. The second one is for a company that closed in 2020, and they're no longer in Little Compton, so I'll make a motion to approve the abatement as listed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then a copy of a resolution adopted by the Portsmouth Town Council resolving to further review and conduct due diligence to fully evaluate the Mayflower wind proposal, as it may impact the town of Portsmouth.
Motion to place on file.
Motion made and seconded to place this matter on file. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent calendar.
Motion to place the consent calendar on file, unless anybody wants to pull anything for discussion.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills as presented.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
I second it.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. There being no further business before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Very educational and helpful session. Appreciate it.